By the time you get in your seat, we should be ready. You're good, sir.
All right, may I have a motion to come out of an executive session? Just don't have no decisions having been made. We got first, may I have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say a five, say a aye. All right, we are out of this executive session at seven forty-nine P M. Uh, Dr. Miller, may we have your recommendation?
Yes. Okay. Um, it is by recommendation to not renew the contract of Melissa Harry.
Okay, um, so may I have a motion? To accept the personnel recommendations and then the re- recommendation not to renew the contract from the state. So moved. Uh, there's the first, may I have a second? Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say a five, say a aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. All right, reports follow. Mr. Jones, seven dot one, school safety. Okay, seven dot two, PK instructional resource adoption.
Been waiting anxiously. And now I got dust in them.
Ruco, you'll have to turn that on.
It's been a long day.
You'll have to turn the mic on over there.
I have to turn it on?
It's just a button. One little click.
I've been here this long.
If you guys still grab your folders, these are your flu. So this is our year, um, for pre-K, uh, instructional resource adoption. It's a every six-year process. Um, this is year nine for me in this position as a pre-K director. When we adopted six years ago, we only had one choice, so the whole state went with creative curriculum. This year, um, they opened up and we've got some different choices. And with the science of reading being a huge focus, uh, we were able to go to the caravan. We were able to see five different publishers. And from those publishers, we, um, decided to go with Frog Street. So if you look in your packet, your table of contents, and we usually give these out, uh, for every, every, um, con- course, every content, any of, anything we're adopting. So, um, if you'll look, the adoption statement just states that the adoption committee selected the following based on our program study and our college and career readiness standards. Um, one of the things we have to do is there are non-negotiable criteria. It has to meet a hundred percent of that. There are general criteria, it has to be an eighty percent or above. And specific criteria, has to be eighty percent or above. And, uh, Frog Street, which is what we have chosen, was a hundred across the board for us. And it talks about in our statement that the committee's decision, we were focused on materials worthy of study and prior organization, aligned with high standards, um, and attended to the instructional shifts and based on research. So all of those things with a shift to science of reading and research-based, that the program needs those. And listening to our educators' voices and expertise. Um, and then if you look at page two, this is our committee. We had, um, Lisa Armstrong, who is, uh, retired pre-K. She consults with us, she stops, and so she went with us. We had Christie Carney, who is a pre-K teacher at Madison. Summer Kinzer is a pre-K teacher at Elm Grove. Uh, I myself attended, and Beth Wallace, who is a pre-K teacher at Steenrod. And the really nice things are, they are, um, the three in-class teachers, they are blended classrooms. So they have a mixture of special education, uh, students and general education students. We're all in a universal pre-K setting, so they were able to look at, um, the modifications and the different things we could do to meet the needs of our struggling and at the, at the need learners. Um, on page three, we supply you with the content areas of pre-K. The title of our resources is Frog Street. The publisher is Frog Street Press. Uh, the copy rate is last year. We include the teacher S K U with this program. Um, with other things when we adopt, um, instructional resources, they have, uh, teach student S K U's, which would be because we would have to buy workbooks, things like that. Um, with pre-K, everything's hands-on, everything's, um, everything's learned through play, um, everything is interactive, tactile. So there's no student, no, no student workbooks, there's no, um, handouts or no worksheets. Everything is, you're, you're learning through the way. Um, so if you look at our pricing there, our pre-K curriculum, we have nineteen classrooms. Um, each classroom is the nine thousand, three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars per classroom. Um, and then we did add on pre-K patterns because when looking at math, math people will like this. Um, math starts, math is made up of patterns. So if we start teaching our pre-K how to recognize patterns and how to keep, continue on patterns, they will be able to grasp the, um, higher level thinking in those open-ended math concepts as they will. So that is a hundred and twenty-four ninety-nine per classroom for the nineteen. Our total cost, you can see there is seventy-eight thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. Um, these are non-consumable. These are things that, um, stay in the classrooms and they're continued to be used. Uh, we've, the only time we would have to reorder is if something was lost or damaged. And if you go to the next page, on page four, it talks about the print materials and the electronic resources. And those are everything in the picture. At the bottom is of the whole kit. We had a training on last Thursday with our pre-K teachers and our pre-K aides. They were all trained on the curriculum. They were, um, they got their kits that day, they're going to take them back to their, um, schools to look at it. Over the summer, we're going to have some time to come together to see what they need to prep, so when we start in August, they're ready to go. And, uh, one thing we lacked a little bit in our last one was, uh, meeting. I'll go to that minute. So our selection rationale is on page five. And it's talked about its research-based coding sequence for literacy, math, in our current domains. Um, a great thing that we, we struggle with sometimes is science, that's one of our, um, areas. And that exploration and, um, making guesses, hypotheses. So this has weekly projects that focus on investigation, problem-solving, uh, and beginning with coding skills. And they use his name as Frog E. We use the little frog and they learn how to code and do things with him. Um, I had mentioned that we have our small group instruction within that that helps with, uh, intentional modification, modifications and differentiating instruction. Um, they also have assessments throughout. We have assessments three times a year that are benchmarks that the state, um, requires. This also incorporates immediate feedback, quick points for them to look at to see what we need to do to, um, help students and where they may be struggling and, and what type of, uh, instructions provide them. Um, they, we also have, it's called conscious discipline. So one of our big things are social and emotional. And conscious discipline is, um, also approved for, for our Head Start Collaborative. It was really good and it builds that social emotional foundation to solve conflicts and manage emotions. That's self-regulation that we have seen a lot of struggles since COVID. And then, um, it's also does, uh, one of our big standards is creating a safe environment. And that's in there as well. And then if you'll look on page six, all the learning domains are covered. And the learning domains within the West Virginia, um, pre-K, universal pre-K standards are approaches to learning, English language arts, mathematics, science, social studies, the arts, health and physical development, social and emotional development and technology. And they're all within, I just did some bullet points so you could look at that to know, uh, um, what things are included that support those domains. And then the last, uh, page, our final, talking about our selection rationale is all the hands-on exploration it provides. So it understeets us a letter builder set. We have a ton, a lot of the math manipulatives, problem-solving. Here's that sorting and sequencing, that's that looking at patterns. Um, the science, we have a lot of math, science manipulatives, so they can experiment, they can problem-solve. And then our STEAM that incorporates our coding and our Frog E for a while. Does anyone have a question?
I have a couple of just quick, very quick.
Yeah.
Um, sounds great. I'll start with that. Uh, the cost comparison, they all did a similar range, all the ones that you looked at?
Actually, this one is, is a little on the lower end.
Okay.
Because there's not a lot of having to repurchase things that we were on.
Okay, that's great.
Uh, and then that includes our professional development sessions that were provided for us.
Okay.
Uh, we've already had one in-person. And also, we also, within that, uh, because sometimes you get charged for professional development separately, it's included. It also has, um, live sessions, virtual we can do. Also has recorded sessions, so if the teacher wants to study up on the way out and they know how to incorporate this, the science, there are snails. I'm not sure, it's right there, they can play and learn it that way. And then we'll have the live sessions where they come to us in person as well.
That's great. Um, you mentioned that you had a training already, what was the feedback like from the teachers?
They loved it, they loved it. It was amazing, um, that ends, uh, that everything that, that the presenter was showing, how implement, she was explaining how it, how it ties into all of our standards, how it's cross-curricular and just talking about what's developmentally appropriate, that the routines that, that students need. And it incorporates so much music into it because we know they learn the best of music. But then at the end of the songs, it's, they have a wind down, like a twenty-second where it's like, no, everybody take a deep breath. And then you hear it so that the calm after that is just a well-thought-out, um, program.
That's great. And the last thing, just real fast, what, um, most of it's hands-on, is there any, like, how much of it is technology-based? Is there any, like, screens that they're looking at or?
There is some technology. And if you look, the, really the technology for them is, it, it, it's learning to use it.
Okay.
So that's just how do you use it and developing digital literacy. So that's, um, if it's up on the screen, it's reading informational text aloud to them. It's not, not, it's not getting on playing games, it's not hanging out on the iPad. It's more of, uh, those type of things. And like our digital resources are, um, like our teacher portal that I told you about. And then there's a family connections. So there are newsletters, there are books that we can, they can access to parents to read at home on, on any type of, uh, device. And then the patterns, teaching them, so if they use that, it will be up like on this board and a pattern would be up and we would say, what's next? What comes next? And then the last thing they have digitally is the music library of all the songs. So it's not a lot of, um, screen time.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Are there any further questions?
Yeah, I, the cost for this basically is, is the state reversing us for the cost of the programmers is coming out of our, uh?
It comes out of our general funds. It's required.
Because it's pre-K, um, step?
No.
Step seven?
Yeah, step seven, and it's, it's because it, this is required by the state every six years.
But it comes out of step seven?
Step seven. Thanks, Steve.
Bernie?
Who?
Yeah? I have no further questions. Thank you for your presentation.
I just want to tell you, I'm really excited, this is my, I love early, that's, I have a specialization in early childhood. And we know that if we have to get them ready, because that sets the foundation for the rest of, uh, their academic careers. And this is, I feel like this is a great thing, because we have a choice, we have to see the other ones. And, um, the teachers are excited to teach us.
Uh, we're nearing three hundred.
Oh, right, yes. Yeah, we have, we have three more today.
Ms. Tracy?
What's the age of our grade? Our preschool, you have to be four on or before June thirtieth? Yes, June thirtieth cutoff date, so they have to turn before by then, this, this June thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you thank the committee for us?
I will, they would be awesome to work with.
Great job. All right, having had that PK instructional resource adoption material, Steve, do you need a motion to, to approve that?
Well, that's, yeah.
Just really had any?
I, you guys would prefer. All right. So may I have a motion to accept the PK instructional resource adoption presented by, uh, Ms. McLeod and recommended by Dr. Miller?
Yes, so moved.
I go first, Molly will be the second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say a five, say a aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion passes, your hands. Consent agenda, Molly, you want to tell anything about?
Just one, and I, I'm slowly passing it quite three.
Eight dot three, which is the agreement of interim healthcare, come out of twenty-six. Um, Bernie?
I.
I have a saying. Okay, any other thoughts? And, okay, we have four eight dot three, agreement, interim health, the staff.
Uh, yeah, so I just, this is for school nurses, it looks like, um, L P M's or R N's. Okay. That are with our medical practice students. Okay, okay, so expand on that just a little bit. So we have four of them that have medical needs that cannot be delegated. Okay. And so they are outside positions, um, that are contracted to be with the child during the school setting. So these are four people that are one-on-one all day with a particular child. And we've used this company before.
Used, yeah.
Yes. That's good.
Bernie?
Yeah? Uh, it's just real quick on, on section one, the agreement, they did not date their dates, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And remained in effect to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, so they speak to corrective means.
Yep.
That's it.
Okay, thank you for saying that.
Okay, well, eight dot three, active consent agenda, um, with the amended dates to be changed. I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented, other than the one change to section, what is it, Bernie?
Eight, uh, section one.
Section one of that, uh, agreement of interim health.
Go on.
I have a first and a second. First and second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say a five, say a aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, your hands. We do have a delegation. There's been patients waiting.
Picked a bad night to come, it's been a long wait.
Would you please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh.
I think I turned it off.
My name's Jack, Jack Kineski. I teach, uh, geometry in S A T prep class up in Wheeling Park High School, the math department chair up there. Uh, I'm here to give you an update on, um, the network that I'm a part of called, uh, M three T stands for, um, hold on, I need to put this mic. All right, it stands for Mount Ne'er Master Mathematics Teachers. Um, this is, uh, a network of, um, teachers from across the state of West Virginia, math teachers, uh, that, uh, get together and collaborate on a regular basis uh, to just improve, uh, math education across, across the state. Uh, so numbers for you. Um, there's, uh, it's, it's been in the works for five years. Uh, I've been a part of it for four. Uh, there's thirty-seven, uh, counties across the state that participated in it. Um, and then forty-two teachers that are leading what we call local improvement teams. So I have a local improvement team here of, uh, teachers from Wheeling Park. And, uh, then with all the members of the local improvement teams, we have two hundred and twenty-five teachers that collaborate on a, on a regular basis. Uh, we, we Zoom at eight o'clock on Monday nights. And it's, it's crazy the amount of, uh, teachers that are willing to, to give up their time on a Monday evening, uh, to, to improve their craft. Uh, then we are asked to be teacher leaders and we, they, we give, uh, traditional professional development to other teachers that are not necessarily part of our lit. Um, and then we've, like to believe, we've affected over, uh, twenty-three thousand students from all over the state. Uh, and I'll, and I'll show you how we've done that. Um, so again, this is my fourth year. Uh, four teachers have been part of my lit for the past couple of years. Carrie Cruz, Ashley Duff, J J Duff, and Elizabeth Jeffers. All right, what we do is we survey the students at the very beginning of the year. And then we, uh, determine where, where do we want to improve. All right, we, the, we have a student survey that, that the whole network uses. And we just find like, oh, I don't, we, we've just pretty much find a bug that we say we want to improve on that. And so that determines our change idea. This year, we, uh, a lot of students reported that their teachers don't require, require them to explain their answers. They feel like we are just looking for a right or wrong answer and we don't want an explanation for that. So, uh, we found, uh, these things called debate cards. So kids had to pick a side and explain why they wanted to go, uh, what solution strategy they wanted to go with. Uh, and it was just to, um, create conversation among students and they had to defend their choice. Uh, so initially, it was just a quick, um, bell ringer. We got it to the point where they had to submit their answer in a Google form. And then we put their answers up the next day and let them do a notice and wonder, like, and, and try to see what they thought about other kids' answers in the class without, uh, knowing who said it. So, um, it was just a great, um, thing that we discovered along the way that did generate more conversation in, in their math class. As a side note, uh, Carrie Cruz and I presented at W B C T M. And the, uh, website that produced those debate cards, the, one of the founders was in our presentation and we got a selfie with him, so that's where that's from.
I thought it was Chad Flowerbox.
Um, so then in the spring after W B C T M, our, it wasn't just local improvement teams, but it was, we separated into specific content areas. So Algebra One teachers were collaborating, geometry teachers were collaborating. And so you picked your bug based on, hey, my geometry kids are struggling, seem to always struggle with this. So it was very content-specific instead of just generic student, uh, things. So, uh, we thought that, uh, our geometry students struggle with probability. Uh, admittedly because a lot of times teachers push that to the end of the year and then they run out of time, uh, if we're just being quite honest. So, um, and if, I, I know Mr. Saunders is not here, but he always talks to us when we're doing our mapping discussions about, these are, those probability questions, these are, they're questions that kids can do well on the state assessments, the S A T, if they've been exposed to that problem. It's not that the concept is that difficult, it's that if it's something that they've never seen, then it becomes way more difficult. So we talked about doing bell ringers with S A T problems. Uh, and we just use the table without any actual, without the actual S A T question. And again, uh, do a notice and wonder activity where just like, what can you tell me about this table? What, what, what do you notice? What do you wonder about it? And then we have a discussion and then we show them what the S A T problem would look like. So it just lets them, uh, kind of dive into the table a little bit. Um, and not feel so overwhelmed and just kind of understand how it could be a simple thing. Direct them what parts of the table are going to help them answer that question. And again, not necessarily that we had to do an entire unit on probability, but just little bell ringers that we can do once a week and, and they, they feel more comfortable when they see it on the S A T. Uh, so I'm, I'm, the rest of this, I'm, I'm, I know I'm probably past my five minutes, so I'm going to go quickly here, I'm, I apologize. But, uh, a lot of this is all data-driven. We survey, um, we survey students, we survey the teachers involved with it. Um, I'm sure Dr. Miller and Mr. Jones will, uh, know that they probably received email, emails from me a couple of times a year from the network asking, uh, for feedback and surveying them. Uh, we survey our lit members, we survey our students. And then it's not just surveys and reflections, but we, uh, we look at test scores from, uh, the sixth and seventh grade, the G S A, as well as S A T, uh, scores from, uh, whoever's involved in, in the network. So, um, I should have printed off this presentation, I thought about it at four o'clock when I was already home from school. So, uh, that did not get done. But here's some quotes from teachers who have been a, uh, a part of this. And then, uh, this is specifically from, uh, Ash, Ashley Duff, who's been a part of it for the past three years. Really being, she's enjoyed really being able to communicate with other teachers around the state, share a plethora of resources and ideas to try within her own classroom. Um, again, from all these surveys, we know that, uh, all the lit members, almost, almost ninety-seven percent say that their time spent in the lit was valuable and worthwhile. Uh, they think they've become a better teacher. Almost ninety-four percent agree that it's been beneficial, they, they've improved as a teacher, being a part of it. Uh, ninety-six percent agree that their participation valuable as opposed to, um, only fifty percent of math teachers across the state say that their P D through their school is valuable and useful. Uh, this is a big one. As you know, uh, I can tell you, math at Park, we've, we've had math openings past couple of years and zero applications. Um, so teacher retention obviously is very important. Uh, lit members say, uh, sixty-five percent of them say that they're going to continue teaching math as long as they can, whereas only twenty-two percent of teachers across the state say that they'll do it as long as they're ready. Um, again, just some more data showing that if you're involved in this, it seems like your, uh, district pass rate is better than districts that are not involved with this. Um, and then same thing with the S A T. All right, uh, real quick, this is my, this is the final, this is my fourth year doing this, and it's a five-year fellowship. Um, and so for the five years that I've a part of it, it, we are funded by the N O I S grant through W V U. Um, and, but the leaders of the network, um, have pushed the state legislature to provide funding for this network to continue even when this N O I S grant is out. All right, and so, um, I don't have all the details right now. But, uh, I will let you know that starting next year, I will give you all the details you need to apply for that funding so that we can continue this program. It's a very, very beneficial program. I can say it has, uh, completely revolutionized my teaching in the past four or five years. And so, um, I would love for Ohio County to continue to be a part of it. Um, and again, it's, it's funding that can come from the state. It, it, other than paying lit members their hours, uh, it's not anything that, that, uh, would really affect our budget, but.
Is this program available for elementary and middle school also?
It is starting to expand, definitely middle school, um, Andy Vogel.
That's great, cause I think.
Andy Vogel's been a part of this, um, uh, but it's also expanding to include elementary students as well.
Can we, can we get it by email? You mentioned you were going to print it out, but you didn't, you didn't email it to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, so what we're going to do, because it's a delegation and we really don't communicate with delegations, but we'll follow up by board member comments, and I'm just going to go down the road. So we'll combine our board member comments and any questions for Jack to comment. Uh, so we will begin with Molly.
Sounds great, I love anything that's going to revolutionize teaching, um, so I like, I look forward to hearing more about it. And thanks for coming and sharing, and please email that to us. And I'd love some more teachers in our county to get involved with it.
Annie?
Uh, yes, thank you for bringing it to our attention. And, uh, um, and same thing Molly said, but thank you.
Uh, Andy? Light one. All right, it was great. Can you get answers to the two questions?
Hey.
One was one.
Definitely, hey. I'm sure, that sounds right. I was waiting on that.
One, seven.
Yeah.
And then, uh. No, and then, oh, yeah, two.
Hold on.
Hydracar.
Yeah.
Two out of fourteen.
Yeah.
Hydridus.
Fourteen.
So if x is equal to, uh.
Here's a show-off for you.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, x, uh, x is equal to twenty.
Yes.
Wow. That's awesome. I think this is fantastic, so it's great, thank you for doing it.
You were just saying that, cause he got the answer.
Can you turn that mic?
So, um, I, I'm going to, what, within your group, has there been discussion about significant fall off in math?
So I'm going to, what, within your group, has there been discussion about the significant fall off in math school, math scores from grade school to middle school? And what, what do, I mean, I love the idea of creating challenges differently for kids to look at math with discussion. And how do we, how do we approach that middle school? And, and not, I'm not asking you for having it, but has that been part of the discussion? Or is it more focused on the math students that teach you math at the level you're at?
Our focus is always on, on the level that we're at. But we, it, it's, it's an ongoing challenge, that's why this, this network is great, so we can kind of sometimes share, you know, misery loves company kind of thing. But also, you know, but what are you doing that's working in your classroom, what are you doing? And it's, it's, it's nice to have people to lean on that are facing the same challenges that we also face.
So there's a year left with this grant?
Yes.
And then what if the legislature fails to fund this? How does this, is this county by county, to try to raise funds, or, you know, what's the relative cost?
The, the bill, I'm almost a hundred percent positive, has been passed, the funding is there. Every county that wants to take advantage of it has to apply.
So are all of our local counties doing the same?
Yes, it's, it's the idea of, so there was three cohorts that got selected to be a part of this. I'm in cohort two, then there's a cohort three. So cohort one, their five years just ended this year. And so their counties who are no longer have representation will apply for that funding. And then cohort two will run out at the end of next year.
Marshall, Broke, Hancock, Tyrone.
Yep.
How many, how many teachers do we have involved in it now in Ohio County schools?
As a, as a fellow, actual fellow, just me, Andy Vogel. We did have two.
Yeah, I remember, you had a partner last time.
I did, I did, I was texting her, I was going at it, but I had to come up here by myself this time.
But so, so really, I mean, your learning and implementing can really only happen at high school, because that's your level, but ideally, we can have people at the other grade levels?
Absolutely. Yep.
Most will be outstanding. Thank you so much for waiting. I have all these pages, which I love to read. All right, that takes care of board member comments, future meetings. Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty-five, they do a regular meeting at sixteen at the board office. Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, they do a meeting at sixteen at the board office. And Monday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, they do a meeting at the board office. They're being up for the business forum board, this meeting is adjourned at eight.